Who's online with me, Councilmember Michelle?
Edward Kalogi, Mr. Michelle.
All right, I got somebody on it with me, that's good. All right, thank you. You know how it is, Ed, I saw I was in the bear city without a gun. Nobody was responding.
You having fun yet? Stop playing solitaire.
How you doing, George?
Oh my, how we hanging in there?
Hey. They never told me when you work for Trent, you'll be drinking early.
That's for sure.
That's right. Are we yet? Are we the only ones on?
Are we gonna have, we gonna have four?
We must have a quorum.
There he is, this is Mr. Conlon, okay.
So at the hour of 12, I will read the open public meeting statement. At that point in time, we have a half hour to wait for a quorum. If not, whoever does appear will, uh, will set a time, if necessary, for the reconvening of the meeting.
Uh, Matt, I looked at that thing in the ordinance and I told Wes I disagree with it. This meeting was advertised, you know, for a specific date and time. Now they can obviously advertise another one. I think that that section of the ordinance conflicts with the Open Public Meetings Act. We can't just pick a date, you know, and say it's gonna be tomorrow or the next day because it, in my view, it would have to be re-advertised again. I think OPA would take precedence.
I was, yes, yeah, and, and, and subject to the caveat of the Open Public Meetings law, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it's probably been on the books a long time and I think it's been overridden by OPA and, you know, we would just have to send out a new notice on a different date. But I don't think we could just say, you know, it's gonna be tomorrow or Monday or whatever, Tuesday and, and just do that. I think we'd be violating the notice provisions.
Correct. It would have to be at least forty, it would actually have to be at least three days.
Right, okay.
Councilman Erickson on the phone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the time has arrived, so I'm gonna start recording the meeting. And I'll read the meeting statement to the record.
Councilman Blakely here.
Thank you, sir. This special meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notices of this meeting were sent to the Trenton Times on November 12, 2021. In addition, copies of notices were posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and filed in the office of the municipal clerk on the aforementioned date. Notices on the bulletin board have remained continuously posted. Proper notice haven't been given, the city clerk is directed to include this state in the meetings, in the minutes of this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the replacement of the current Trenton Emergency Communications System, consider a resolution authorizing appropriation for replacement of the radio system, and consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of radio and dispatch communication equipment. Council President and the Vice President are absent. Uh, I'm going to call the roll to determine, uh, the, uh, presence of a quorum. Uh, Mr. Blakely.
Present.
Ms. Carla Wilson. Ms. Carla Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Reggie.
Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we do not have a quorum, per Rule 8316. We shall wait one half hour to see if a quorum is formed. If not, we will adjourn the meeting to a later date and time selected from amongst the members that were present, as Mr. Kalogi indicated earlier. Um, because of the Open Public Meetings Act, that would have to be at least seventy-two hours from now. Uh, if we do gain a quorum, I will call for an election of a council president or vice president should, uh, the council president or vice president remain absent. Uh, until such time, uh, we will wait, uh, I started the meeting at 12:01, so the meeting will start, uh, it will conclude at 12:31 if we do not have a quorum. I will call the roll intermittently. Uh, and I will watch to see if we have a quorum. Mr. Kalogi, do you concur?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. So ladies and gentlemen, please stand by. Uh, I will actually get on the phone, I'm gonna get off the line here and see if I can get a quorum going. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez has indicated he might, he's out of town right now. He indicated he might be able to join us, uh, if absolutely necessary. Let me try to get him on the phone. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Trenton City Special Meeting of Monday, November 15, 2021. At the current time, we are doing a quorum call. Uh, we are waiting until, uh, 12:31 to see if we can form a quorum of the Trenton City Council at this time. Uh, I know several council members, uh, are out of town, so we, I've reached out to them, left them voicemail messages to see if they can connect. I believe some of them are actually in transit right now, so. Uh, we're gonna wait for a little while. Um, I am looking to see if, uh, another member will join us. And once we have a quorum, uh, we will proceed with a, uh, election for a temporary president or vice president, and, uh, and we'll go from there. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I shall return shortly. Uh, that being said, uh, we will, uh, still look for a quorum here in several minutes. I'm gonna call out the name to several members just to ascertain whether they have arrived or not. Uh, Ms. Carla Wilson. Ms. Carla Wilson is still absent. Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is still absent. Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is still absent. Council President McBride. Council President McBride is still absent. Ladies and gentlemen, I will return shortly to, uh, continue the quorum call. Thank you.
I am in. Councilman Rodriguez.
Ladies and gentlemen, we now have a quorum. I'll call the roll again. It's 12:13 PM. Uh, just to start off, we'll redo the call to order, uh, and we will, uh, we'll go for attendance at that point in time. This call to order for the special meeting on Monday, November 15, 2021. This special meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notices of this meeting were sent to the Trenton Times on November 12, 2021. Copies of notices posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and filed in the office of the municipal clerk on the aforementioned date. Notices on the bulletin board have remained continuously posted. Proper notice haven't been given, the city clerk is directed to include this state in the meetings, minutes of this meeting. The purpose of this special meeting is to discuss replacement of the current Trenton Emergency Communications System, consider a resolution authorizing appropriation for replacement of the radio system, and consideration of the resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of radio and dispatch communication equipment. And I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely. I'll come back to Mr. Blakely. Ms. Carla Wilson. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Reggie.
Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, I see your microphone moving, so I'm gonna mark the president. Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Blakely. Uh, until Mr. Blakely returns, we do not have a quorum. Accordingly, we're going to continue the quorum call. Uh, it is 12:15 PM.
I am present, Mr. Conlon.
I do have you as president. Unfortunately, Mr. Blakely is now absent because he is not, he's on hold. Uh, waiting for him to return. So we do not still have a quorum because I don't have the meeting connected. Uh, get these ready, man. Shoot it on photo paper. Ladies and gentlemen, this is quorum call for the special meeting of Monday, November 15, 2021. Uh, I'll now call the roll again to see if we have a quorum. Mr. Blakely. Blakely remains absent. Ms. Carla Wilson. Carla Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle, sir? Come back to Mr. Michelle. Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Michelle?
It's Councilman Blakely.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a quorum?
Uh, well, we're gonna go Mr. Michelle now. Mr. Michelle? I'll come back in five minutes. Michelle will be brought absent. Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent. We do not have a quorum. We'll check again at 12:26. Thank you.
Are you there?
Mr. Michelle, is that you, sir?
I'm here.
Okay, I'll call the roll again. Mr. Blakely.
Present.
Ms. Carla Wilson. Carla Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Wilson.
Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent. The clerk is present. Mr. Edward Kalogi, Legislative Council is present. I'll call the directors. Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz? You are here, I can see you, sir. We're good.
I'm present. I'm out.
Mr. Cherry? Are you with us?
I'm present. Thank you.
Mr. Liston. Mr. Liston, I see Mr. Liston there as well. He's present. Mr. Bridges, I see Mr. Bridges, he is present. Uh, Director Wilson, Acting Director Wilson.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Zappley, Captain Zappley is with you as, as well, sir. Uh, Director Douglas?
Present.
Director Daniels? Dr. Lopez?
Present.
Thank you. Director Anatiri?
Present.
Director Richardson? Director Lavenberg?
Good afternoon, President.
Good evening. Director Zlinsky, I see you as well, sir, or Mr. Zlinsky. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we have a quorum for the special meeting because we do not have a council chair or vice chair. I'm gonna take nominations from the body, uh, to elect a chairman for the purposes of this meeting. Do I have a nomination for a chairman?
You have, Mr. Michelle.
I have a nomination for Mr. Michelle by Mr. Rodriguez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. I'll call the roll. This is to nominate Mr. Michelle as the chairman for today's meeting. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Carla Wilson? Carla Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride? Council President McBride. Mr. Michelle, you are the chairman. Chairman, sir, would you like to proceed down the agenda for the meeting, sir?
Yes, sir. Proceed.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first, we have a presentation from the Trenton Police Department, emergency radio room replacement. Captain Zappley, will you need, uh, presentation rights for the meeting, sir?
Uh, do you have a copy of it, Mr. Conlon?
Uh, I think I do, but, uh, if you'd like to know, we can do it either way. Let me just bring it up. Go into my folder. You just tell me when you want the next slide, sir.
Okay, um.
Uh, council, council chairman, uh, Mr. Michelle, uh, can I turn the floor over to Mrs. Zappley for the purposes of the presentation?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Zappley, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, everyone that's on the, uh, call today. Thank you. Uh, if you could, uh, Mr. Conlon, if you wanna, uh, go to the next slide. Okay, uh, that there, uh, basically is the current system that we're currently using right now. Um, really, that, this call is not about that system, but it's there for anyone to, uh, see it. So let's move on to the next, um, page, please. Okay, uh, we have two options for the city to, um, go down that road. Uh, one, we can go to the State of New Jersey system, or two, we can go with the Mercer County system. Uh, the State of New Jersey system, uh, is on this 700 to 800 megahertz system. It is a P-25 network and it is in Phase Two of the P-25 system. If we use the state system, we can take our channels that the city Okay, uh, we have two options for the city to, um, go down that road. Uh, one, we can go to the state of New Jersey system, or two, we can go with the Mercer County system. Uh, the state of New Jersey system, uh, is on this seven hundred to eight hundred megahertz system. It is a P twenty-five network, and it is in phase two of the P twenty-five system. If we use the state system, we can take our channels that the city actually owns and has through the FCC and go on to that system right now with our old channels that we had. Um, if we elect to go on to the county system, the county system is in the five hundred megahertz, uh, range. It, it is a UHF, uh, system on a T-band. Uh, we would use the county frequencies. Okay, uh, next slide, please. Okay, an overview of the county, the Mercer County system, it is, like I said, a, a UHF, uh, channel. It's a T-band in the five hundred megahertz. They're county-owned frequencies. Uh, we would have county-wide coverage. The system has been tested by my technical services unit, and it is adequate right now if the city elects to go on to that system. We could do so with hardware, which means the, uh, portable radios and mobile radios. Uh, we can go on that pretty seamless within probably a thirty to ninety-day turnaround time, depending on if the equipment is readily available. Um, the county system is at P twenty-five. It is a phase one at that current time. It does not have TBMA, which TBMA means it's Time Division Multiple Access. Uh, that basically is a two-for-one channel split. So in other words, if two people are going to, uh, talk simultaneously and they went into a certain channel, we could have two, we could not have two, uh, people go into that channel at the same time on the county system because it is in phase one at the current time. Uh, if we were on the states, which I'll get to in another slide or two, we would be able to, uh, have two people actually speak simultaneously in that same channel, which basically doubles our output on the system. Um, the county is planning to upgrade the P twenty-five system, uh, onto the phase two sometime later next year and possibly into twenty twenty-three. If we can move on, Mr. Conlon. Okay, uh, the state system, uh, there's a, a map. We would have coverage throughout the entire state of New Jersey. Um, again, it's in the seven to eight hundred megahertz range. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. Okay, on the, uh, no, go back one. Okay, uh, no, we're, we're going ahead. You got to go back. Okay, um, on the state system. Well, yep, on the state system, uh, we would be, we would have our own, city-owned, uh, channels through the FCC on the seven to eight hundred megahertz, uh, system. There's, the state system is P twenty-five. It is phase two, which means we would have the TBMA activated, which once again means Time Division Multiple Access. So it is a two-for-one channel split. So in other words, we are doubling the capacity of the radio system. The state network upgraded with the most current P twenty-five hard, hardware and software. Um, the releases, which includes Smart Connect, Wi-Fi, and over-the-air programming. Uh, the Wi-Fi, if anybody is wondering what that would mean, is, is if we, uh, are in an area or anyone on the system is in an area that is not getting a signal on the trunk system, uh, automatically built into the radio, it would automatically find the closest Wi-Fi network and seamlessly transfer to that. That way, the signal would be able to, and the transmission would be able to get out over the air, so everyone would be able to, uh, hear that. Uh, as opposed to without the phase-two system, uh, if you didn't have a signal, you would be in a so-called dead spot, and therefore the signal would not be able to be transmitted through the trunk system. Uh, the over-the-air programming, which means, uh, the system would be able to have update, updates done over the air. That way, we do not have to handle every single radio that the city would buy to, uh, do upgrades and so forth. It would be done over the air. Once the radio was turned back on, the system would automatically find it and do the, uh, updating, and it would be done without anybody really even knowing that it took place. In addition to the state system, if we elect to go that route, um, we would actually install, have two sites within the city of Trenton right now, uh, that would be done to further enhance the, uh, reliability and the signal within the city confines. Um, right now, the state system does not have locations within the city that would actually help us with, uh, signal right now. We would need to add our own two sites, which they would be strictly for us. Our radios would prefer those two sites, in addition to one being a headquarters. So in a sense, three different locations. Um, that way, they would all be interlinked, and we would have, actually have our own system within the county system, which would save us an additional, uh, money because we would not need the infrastructure. That way, the state would already be supplying it for us. Uh, again, we would be using our own, uh, eight hundred channel frequencies that we already currently have. We would use nine channels, um, and it would be TBMA, so therefore it would be doubled to the eighteen-channel efficiency. Uh, we would have tenfold capacity, and it will support all of the Trenton department users. If we go on the county system, that would only be for public safety. The county will not allow all the non-public safety entities within the city to go on their site, which means water, sewer, city hall security, uh, inspections, sanitation, solid waste, everything that's non-public safety in the city on the county site, we would have to come up with another option for radio communication for them. On the state system, it would be our system within the state system, and we could take them on, and in addition to, we could actually bring on everybody that's on the county system right now onto our system and still have room for additional subscribers. And what I mean by subscribers is the fact that we would actually have radios installed onto the syste-, programmed into the system to actually be able to, uh, talk on it. So that's what I mean by subscribers. So that's how much, uh, capacity we would have on the state system. We could take everybody on the county system and bring it over to our city system within the state and, uh, actually take on more if it came down to it. So, uh, if we can move on to the next slide, sir, that would be appreciated. Um, if there's, if there's any questions whether we would be interoperable with anybody else in the county, that is, uh, true. There is such a thing called an ISSI link there in the center of the page. Every county system is linked through the ISSI link with the state system. So therefore, uh, we would be able to have interoperability, which is a big thing today, which, uh, which is the P twenty-five network. Uh, we would be able to have that, uh, and be able to still speak to everybody on the county system. Uh, if we were on the county system, obviously, that would be a no-brainer. However, in this instance, we would use the ISSI link through the state to tap in and do a patch with the county, and therefore we, we, we would be able to, uh, converse with everybody on the county system, uh, statewide. Okay, uh, moving on to the next, um, slide, please. Mr. Conlon, can we go on to the next one, please? Okay, if, uh, we were to go on to the state system, the project scope of this, which again is on a state contract, um, we would have twelve new operator-position dispatch consoles. Uh, we would actually end up with a state-of-the-art communication center. In addition to the radio, uh, system, we would also, also actually have a twelve-operator-position nine-one-one call taker telephone network, a new nine-one-one next-gen state-of-the-art, uh, phone system, which is desperately needed, uh, in the city because our current system is actually, uh, past its, uh, life expectancy. Um, this new next-gen nine-one-one system, sooner or later, is going to be mandated by the state, so therefore we will be ahead of the curve and already on the system. That way, when the state does mandate it for all municipalities and PSAPS, we will already have it in place. We won't have to spend money now on a new system and then have to upgrade at another time. We would, we would be doing it ahead of time. Um, it would be twelve-operator-position dispatch console furnitures, uh, for our radio, uh, room and all of our, uh, current dispatchers here in our communication center. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, we'll have a two-site simulcast cell in Trenton on the state's P twenty-five phase-two network, and there will be additional three, uh, microwave backhaul links to connect the states, to the state, uh, network. So in other words, all three antennas will be connected together. That way, if a unit, uh, roams from one particular location and gets into a stronger coverage area on another antenna site, it will then prefer that site to give them the best and most current, uh, signal available. And so therefore, they'll all be interlinked together. Um, for the police radios, we will be purchasing four hundred portables and a hundred and eighty-five mobiles, which is a car radio. On the fire side, we'll have a hundred and twenty-five ruggedized fire portables, as well as a hundred and twenty-five fire mobiles. And for all the rest of the city entities that are non-public safety, like I had mentioned earlier, there'll be five hundred portables purchased, as well as five hundred mobiles. And if we come down to that we don't need five hundred mobiles per se, we can interchange them and, uh, miss it, mix and match, uh, portables for mobiles in that, uh, price range. All radios will include Wi-Fi Smart Connect for increased coverage and reliability, like I previously, uh, mentioned. All radios include encryption, not only for public safety, but as well as for non-public safety. All portable radios will include the necessary accessories, i.e. spare batteries, chargers, carry cases, remote speaker mics, et cetera. Uh, there will be system staging installation, which is the infrastructure and subscribers optimization, and there'll be a warranty included. And there'll also be maintenance on the simulcast cells funded by the state of New Jersey after the one-year manufacturer warranty. So that will be, that's a good plus on the side of the city where we will then save a manufacturer's warranty that we would normally have to do after the manufacturer's warranty takes over. We would actually save that because it is the state system, so therefore they're required to have, uh, upkeep on the system, so to speak, without the city paying for any of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you refer to the antennas, uh, with that, the state system. I am for the state system. And, uh, are we going to be able to use our own city, uh, towers or whatever for those, to place those antennas, right? We don't have to go rely on a private, uh, contractor for the antennas?
No, sir, Councilman. I, I prefer not to put out the locations that we would be using in an open public meeting. Uh, however, if you would like to know the locations, uh, after the meeting, I would be more than happy to, uh, tell you the locations.
No, 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 I'm not saying for you to give me the locations. I'm going to say they are going to be city-owned.
Yes, yes, they will be. They will be.
No private locations.
No, we will not be renting or anything. The city will be buying all the, um.
Thank you, sir. That's what I wanted to hear.
You got it. Okay, Mr. Conlon.
Excuse me, for all council people, wait until the captain is totally done with his presentation, and everyone will have an opportunity to ask him all the questions you want. Thank you. Go ahead, Captain.
All right. Thank you, uh, Councilman. Uh, Mr. Conlon, can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, the procurement for, uh, this, if it is approved by city council and city, uh, administration, would all be done on the New Jersey state contract. Uh, there's that information there for you is right there. Okay, uh, next one, just an overview on some of the, uh, next slide, please, just an overview on some of the things I've touched on already. Once again, they're our own. The city right now, we still have them, uh, our frequencies, they're still good. We, uh, are able to bring them over to the state system if that's the road that we so choose. Um, it will have tenfold capacity, which will support every Trenton, uh, department, uh, every city of Trenton user, that I should say. We won't have to do something separate, uh, for non-public safety if we elect to go the state route. Okay, next slide, please. Next slide, Mr. Conlon. Okay, uh, this here is just, uh, it shows you our, uh, system or, uh, our frequencies. We, they are due to expire in March of twenty twenty-five, and they are our channels right there that's on the screen right now, um, including two very large ones at the bottom. They're over one thousand watts worth of power, which are, when I tell you extremely, extremely valuable, they are very, very hard to come by. Uh, I would say that, I would hope that we do not let these channels go by the wayside. We would never be able to get these channels back again if someone was to, uh, grab them, uh, in the pool. If, uh, after twenty twenty-five, they go into the pool, and someone surely will grab those two channels right now. We are extremely fortunate to have those two channels. Okay, uh, next slide after that, Mr. Conlon. Uh, the, the police radios that we would buy under this system are the APX six thousand. They're a single-band portable radio. I won't go through, I won't read everything there, but you could see the, the pictures of what the, uh, they look like. They're both very rugged. They're waterproof, um, state-of-the-art. Uh, they can handle P twenty-five, uh, phase two, phase one. Uh, this is something that would be here for a long time. Uh, we would not have to do any upgrades in a year or two with this radio. Okay, next slide. These are the fire radios, the portables that the fire department would have. These meet a lot of their standards, uh, as far as in the fire service, uh, and this meets their approvals. Uh, that's the fire radios that they would, uh, get if we were to move on with this system. You can go to the next one. They are, the picture there is the, the, uh, picture of the, uh, the microphone that the fire department would use. It's a lot different than one that we would use for the police department. It is, uh, heat-rated, and, um, you could see all the different little features there that it has. It's high visibility, has a strobe light on it, and it's a lot of features that the fire department would use and is necessary in today's environment. Next slide. This is a picture of the, uh, mobile radio that would be installed in all police, uh, vehicles that we have. That's just a picture there. And then there's the next slide. Again, Mr. Conlon is just showing you, it's almost like a feature, shows you what the buttons and, and everything else is. I won't go through any of that, but that's just an overview on that. You can go to the next one. That is the fire department mobile radio that will be installed in all of the fire department vehicles, fire engines, ladders, engines, uh, battalion car, battalion chief, uh, vehicles, everything fire department, uh, related that would get that radio. And the next slide is the one previously of the police one showing you what the buttons say and so forth. Okay, next slide, Mr. Conlon. Okay, this radio here would be, uh, issued to all non-public safety. This is the portable radio that will be given, uh, like I said, to all non-public safety entities within the city. That's some of the, uh, I guess, features of this radio. And if we move on to the next one, and the last, should be the last slide, would be the mobile radio that would be installed in all of the non-public safety vehicles within the city. That would be the, uh, mobile radio. And I believe that should conclude the presentation. And if there are any questions from anybody, I would be more than happy to answer those.
Uh, Mr. President?
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, right now, uh, we are not using that eight hundred megahertz, uh, frequency, right?
That is correct. We are not.
Okay, and, uh, so we could have been using it for years if we, we didn't have to go through it.
If we were not on the current system that we're on now, uh, we had used them prior to, but there's no use for them to be used on that current system that we're using now. But if we move on to.
That answers my question. Uh, also, uh, the state will manage this system. We don't have, we have to have a, an external manager.
We don't have, do we have to have a, an external manager or you go manager? How that, how is it going to be managed?
The, the state would manage the infrastructure. They would be responsible for all upgrades and any maintenance on the system.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my question, the repairs and whatever, anything happens, the state would take care of it.
Yes, and the other thing I'd like to add, the, if we elect to move forward with this, the contractor or the person who's, that we would contract to get all the equipment and to, to put this system in place for us, is the same one who installed the state's system. So we're not involving another entity coming into the picture. This is the person, the company, that actually installed the state, the state's system for them. So we would be using the state, the same contractor as well.
And, and you mentioned that if we go through the state, it will take a lot less time, because we're going to be able to hook up, right? We don't need those radios from the county and stuff. How will that work, the transition?
Okay.
Let's say that, that, I'm talking about December 31st, that number, you know, could we get something working by that day or?
Not on the state system. We would need to install the two site-location antennas to further enhance the signal within the city at that point. I am not comfortable to go on to the state system without the two antennas right now. We would actually go back to where we were previously with the current system as far as reliability, until we have the two antennas locations within the city to further enhance the, the signal.
But you, you said before that we do have available locations to place those antennas.
Yes, that is correct.
So placing the antenna is not such a, the, the sin was to build up the structure to place the antenna, but if we have them already, it would be a matter of probably days that, you know, somebody will go there and install those antennas, like.
We, we.
But I saw daily real quick.
Yes, if once, if this is approved, I have been given word by the contractor that we're going to use, that they will start building and doing what they have to do behind the scenes until all the ink is dried and all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, start moving forward to condense the time so we can actually expedite this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. That is, I appreciate your understanding.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I'm here.
If you have any more questions after we're done with the rest of the council people, then you can come back on again to finish up. Councilman Jerrel Blakely, would you like to address the captain on this issue?
No, thank you.
Councilman Harris, would you like to address Captain Zapley?
No, thank you for your time, Mr. Zapley.
You're welcome.
I myself, I just want to say it was a great presentation. I learned a lot in a short time, and hopefully, council will agree with everything that went down, and we can move forward in this. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any other questions?
Yes, yes. We are going to be, are we going to be voting on those two resolutions today, right?
Yes, we are.
And once we vote on these two resolutions, that means that we accept, but I have, I still not clear which system are we going to use, the state? I prefer the state, but, but the county, if we have to go through all that, you know, it's not, it's not worth it, you know, the, the state's already set up, but with that resolution, which one are we going to be accepting, the state? Or we are not going to be dealing with that today? So I believe we should go ahead and vote on the state system, because according to this presentation, this is the most advantageous.
Yes, yes, councilman. My recommendation to the city is that we move forward on the state system, only because it incorporates the rest of the city's non-public entities. Without that, if we move on to the county system, we therefore have to come up with another means of getting them radio communications.
Okay, but my question is, are we going to vote on your recommendation, which is also my recommendation today? If we approve that resolution, that, that will be, that will be, we will be going through the state contract and through the state system? That's my question. Can we clarify that and add it to the resolution today? Because we don't have much time. We have, I am on vacations, and I, I accepted to join in, to try to get in, because I want something to be, today, a solution for this today, if we can. We have the quorum, so I believe we should go ahead and approve the state system today. But can we do that today?
All right. Council President, if I may speak?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Councilman Michelle. Councilman Santiago, yes, the resolution is actually for that equipment, for us to be able to use the state system. And it, it is in front of you for a vote today.
Okay, that's, that's it. Let's keep it going.
Emergency 911 system equipped for the city of Trenton.
A slow move?
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson. Colwell Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent. The resolution carries by a vote of four to zero with three members absent. Next year, Resolution 21-527, the resolution warrant contract in accordance with the New Jersey Local Contracts Law, NJSA 40A, 40 cap A, colon, 11-12, to motor all the solutions for the purchase of emergency and non-emergency radio dispatch communication and information technology equipment. Let me put this up on the screen real quick, if you don't mind. There we go, it finally opened. Okay, here we go. Do I have a motion?
A slow move.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely, I'll now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson. Colwell Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes aye. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle votes aye. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent. The resolution carries by a vote of four to zero with three members absent. Council President, that is actually the conclusion of the meeting of the items that were advertised, because as a special meeting, we cannot consider any further business. Accordingly, a motion to adjourn would be appropriate at this time.
Slow move.
Adjourn, I have a second by Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk? Go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Hello? Yes, Mr. Clerk, is it not, is it now not required by the local, by the Open Public Meetings Act that there be public comment at every meeting, even a special meeting?
I was, I don't, I don't believe so. It's my understanding that public comment.
No, that's not true.
Is, okay, please don't interrupt it while we're discussing this, please. Okay, we'll get to it. I'm going to defer to the lawyers, but it's my understanding that public comment is not a right. If it is announced on the agenda, it is, it is permitted, but it is not an absolute right. But if there is differing opinion, I'll defer.
Yeah, that's not my impression. I'd ask Mr. Bridges to weigh in on the issue. Okay.
Mr. Clojic?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other business that we can go into, if we have to, concerning the radio system? Can we address that now?
No, you can only address what was on the agenda and, you know, what was, what was advertised, but I'm more concerned at the moment with, I believe, the requirement that every meeting has to have a public component to it. In the old days, it wasn't like that, but then when they revised the Open Public Meetings Act, I'm in my car, so I don't have the statue in front of me, but I'm relatively sure that any public comment would have to be entertained.
Council President, I, I, I would, I believe that we do need the public comments, but if, if Mr. Wes Bridges can go on there pretty quickly, if he gives us the time, and, and look at the state statue. I, I'm on, I'm on, and the public comment is appropriated and that needed.
Okay. Let's go for the. It would be limited, it, this would be limited to the scope or is open for any purpose? Because on Tuesday.
That's a special meeting, you know, I believe it would be limited to the content of what we spoke about today, because in the nature of the meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, what would a time period would you would like to allow for a public comment?
Four five minutes.
That's Mr. Chair, it's the chairman's discretion.
Three minutes.
Three minutes per. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to put up a comment period for three minutes. Mr. Clojic, I do have one other problem, though.
What's that, sir?
Before the vote to adjourn, a member departed. So I actually don't have a quorum anymore. Should we proceed?
Would it be possible to get the member back?
I could try.
Hey, do we need to put quorum for a public comment? Official business is already done. This is just the comment portion.
Still an open public meeting. It's, it cannot continue without a quorum. The open public meeting ceases when the quorum stops.
Isn't the quorum for official action?
No, the quorum is for the entire meeting. Not a quorum, we are adjourned by law and by, by the rule.
Mr. Conlin, I see, I see at least three people here.
I do need four, sir. I need a quorum in order to.
Yes, but, but the president was there right now, unless he left.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, I have Mr. Michelle, it's Mr. Blakely that departed. Let me see if I can get Mr. Blakely.
I, I see him standing there, probably.
Mr. Blakely's first. Councilman Blakely is here.
All right, Mr. Conlin, then you can start at any time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be the public comment portion. You have three minutes. It would be limited to the scope of the items considered on the agenda today. Council President, we have Mr. Renallo. Chairman, we have Mr. Renallo. Would you like to acknowledge Mr. Renallo?
Yes, he can go.
Mr. Renallo, you hear me? Yes, sir.
Great, just to keep it brief, I wanted to thank the captain for the informative presentation. It was very useful, to my understanding, and I'd like to thank council members that were present for the common sense decision. So thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes, does anybody else wish to?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Hello?
Yeah, identify your name for the record, please.
I can barely hear you.
Yeah, what, what is your name for the record, sir, if you wish to be acknowledged for the public portion?
Yes, my name's Stuart Alterman. I'm an attorney for the Trenton Superior Officers.
Hold on one second, Council, Council Chairman, would you like to recognize Mr. Stuart Alterman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alterman, you have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it very, very much. Here we have a, a situation, obviously, we're in dire need to fix the radio situation in the city of Trenton. Captain Zapley has made a presentation that is outstanding, is demonstrative of the needs that the city of Trenton, the needs of the police department and the needs of all those individuals, all those public safety individuals that depend upon the radio system. So I would hope, on behalf of the Trenton TSOA and PBA, that council appropriately acts on this matter today, and takes the appropriate actions as presented and requested by Captain Zapley. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be recognized for the public Council Chairman, I don't see anybody else. Would you like to enter a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
I'm motioned to adjourn by Mr. Michelle, the chairman, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, and Mr. Harrison, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
If you want a second, aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 1:04 PM. Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Have a great evening.
Great job, John.